Council meeting, we'll start it off with Kathleen, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Of course. Dear Lord, thank you for our many gifts, the gifts of life and freedom, the gift of this beautiful city, all the people who come together to serve the city in so many ways, in so many positions, paid and unpaid. We ask you to continue to bless us, to fill us with wisdom and love, to guide us in truth. And please bless our meeting tonight, our city, and all of its people always. We ask this in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen. You'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, do we have any open forums, Jen? Okay, all right, no open forums tonight, we'll go to item four. Items there, he is here, he just didn't fill the form out. You'll state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, I'm James Montoya and I am a member of the neighborhood on South Street off of Meadow Brook. I live on Shirley Street at 2530. And I'm here today because I had an incident that has been occurring continuously in our neighborhood. And I'm here basically because we have two speed bumps between Seventh, Highway Seven and South Street. I walk my dog from my street on South Street, I mean on Shirley Street down to Meadow Brook and walk all the way to the end and all the way back. Been doing it for quite some time. The other day, last Friday, I was walking my dog and cars continue to come speeding, especially during the lunch hour, I guess they're trying to get to lunch and they're taking shortcuts. And when people are speeding, we have two speed bumps, when people are speeding, I tell them, slow down when I'm walking my dog. And a gentleman in a black SUV, I couldn't get his license, by the time I took out my phone to get his license, he took off. But he was speeding, I told him to slow down, and he started honking at me and flipping me the bird and came directly at me with his vehicle, I had to jump off the road. So he takes off, so I pull out my phone and he turned, and he saw me doing that, so he screeches tired, turned around and started coming after me. So I had to run through the bushes in my backyard to be able to get to safety. We have children that live on that street, they play out in the street, they play basketball, they have their basketball goals. I'm just real concerned because I'm not sure, I see two police officers daily on South Street by Fredonia Baptist Church in their park there. But I have not, I've seen one police officer come through my neighborhood maybe once in the last month. I'm just very concerned, I know that there's other neighborhoods that are probably having the same situation where people are speeding in the neighborhood. These aren't people that live in my neighborhood, they're people that are using that street to get back and forth. I don't know what can be done about it, but I thought I was gonna get run over. You know, I don't care about me, but my dog could have gotten run over, she's everything I have, so. I just wanted to share that with you all because it's a big concern of mine, especially now in the summer when our kids are playing out in the street and the evenings and stuff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya, appreciate it very much, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item four, items to be removed from the consent agenda.
This may shock the council, but I have no items to remove and I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Are you sure?
I seconded it quickly before.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, now we'll go to the regular agenda. We'll go to item six A, receive report regarding the downtown master plan and give staff direction on the downtown and comprehensive planning process. Who's doing this, okay. Ms. Sal.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Assistant Director, excuse the voice, it's sinus infections trying to kill me. I'm here to introduce Miles McCall, who is our Chairman of the Downtown Advisory Committee, who's gonna present this item to you. Of course, after Miles's presentation and public comment, we're happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, thanks for letting me be here, I appreciate it. I want to start by first telling you the committee thanks you for just having the chance. I mean, to be honest, it's fun to go back and look at the history of your downtown, to look at your future downtown, see what you can learn from the past, see what you can envision for the future, and we really appreciate that. Special call out to Greg Williams, who was co-chair, and we've got quite a few committee members here today. And like any committee, we had folks that never showed up, but man, we had a great core group that came over and over and over again, really chewed on this bone trying to be able to move our downtown forward, and I appreciate that. You know, we had all kinds of folks, we had entrepreneurs and people from the arts and education, committed citizens, longtime citizens. John Anderson was an avid committee member and he actually served on the 1973 Plan. It's awfully handy when you can just say, John, did y'all do this, or John, did y'all do that? We had Roy and Amelia and Jay that all served on the committee and were pretty regular attendants and committed to trying to do that, and so I wanted to do a call out for them. We tried to look forward. What you've been able to see that we want to talk about today is a draft. And, you know, from the academic world, we know what a draft means is not quite finished. It's close, but not quite finished. And I want to talk about that draft because from the very beginning, when we came together as committee incredibly, I walked into that room and I looked around and I thought, what a unique, diverse collection of people. And all of them just cared about what happens and what the downtown looks like. And that was pretty neat. I mean, I looked around the room and I saw all kinds of folks and I thought, well, this is gonna be interesting. And indeed it was, because everybody got to commit and share their ideas as we began to move forward. But we said from the very beginning, let's trust the process. We don't care about the politics that are going on at all, we just love downtown, what can we do for downtown? What does the future look like? Can we paint a picture? If you look at that 73 Plan, not all of it was done, but some of it was done. And we thought if we could just look forward and put the next wave out there, not all of it's gonna be done, but some of it will be done. And that's how you kind of keep things moving forward. So what we have is a draft that we all came to consensus that was good enough to say, now let's go kind of see what kind of additional public input we can get to finalize that draft, to have something to give to the City Council and say, now there it is, y'all can use it or not use it, it'll be your choice at that point in time, but we want the chance to give you a finished product. We are so close to getting something that you can then decide, yea or nay, or to be honest, we knew this all along, there'll be pieces in it that, we don't know how to do it, we can't fund it, that's okay, but you'll have something to begin to work forward going down the line a little bit. As you know, we were appointed on November 2nd in 2022, I guess I better get this, I mean 2021. You can look at the list, I'm not gonna read the slides to you. We had lots of meetings and downtown tours and focus groups and meetings with citizens and we did surveys and we began to gather that stuff and try to sift through it. We talked about it as a committee, you're not gonna get everything you want in the plan. Get something you want in the plan. And we had to do that, we had to make compromises and had to make decisions on things that might be able to go in there, might not be able to go in there. What we'd like to do is take that unfinished product that's so close, kind of move on forward with some public outreach to get that draft corrected. I know there's been dialogue, there's some language in it, people don't like, great, that's wonderful, that's why it's a draft. We want to get to that final product. We've done a lot of public outreach, we've had a lot in it, but it was, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? Now you got a story to tell. You've got something to put in front of them that kind of gives the big picture and you can go back out with public outreach to try to get additional cleanup on that draft so that maybe at the end, we've got something that we're kind of proud of. And what does that public outreach look like? First of all, we've got some stakeholders that we all know, the Historic Landmark Preservation Committee, the Main Street Advisory Board, CBB, Parks Advisory Board, Downtown Merchant Meetings. I mean, those people have ownership. I mean, they're down there, they're involved. We want a chance to go to them and let them give their input, see what we can do to correct that draft and move it forward to kind of some kind of final product that at least is there if we ever get to the point where we can pull it off the shelf and move forward. But we also want to go to, you know, community outreach with that final story, not just the pieces, the whole picture of what it looks like. And that's, you know, town hall style meetings, open up social media, giving chances for people to get a printed copy, take it home, study and look at it and to give that feedback to us. Poster exhibits, we'd like to go to different services and civic groups in the community and say, this is where we are right now, if you like something, let us know. And if you don't like something, let us know, because we're trying to turn this draft into a kind of a final product that we can present to the City Council. You ask us to do a job. We're not on payroll, we're volunteers, we all did it for the same reason, we just love downtown Nacogdoches and we want to make sure that it stays viable. We've all driven to those other towns where you drive through downtown and there's nothing. Nobody wants that Nacogdoches, it's too important of a piece of the future of not just Nacogdoches, but the whole region. And so you ask us to do a job and we just want a chance to finish it and give it to you and then you'll be asked to do a job and decide what to do with it. We always knew we wouldn't be the ones implementing it, we might be volunteers, but it takes staff and money and commitment down the line and that's something that y'all will get to work through at a later time. So we'd like to move forward and go through that, that public input process that's been outlined. We'd like to take that, we'd like to sit down as a committee and finalize that draft. We'd like the chance to be able to do the final edits and remove the word "draft" so that we can then come to you and say, you asked us to do a job, we did the best we can. And though it's not perfect and it doesn't get everything everybody wants and some of it may be possible and some of it may be impossible, but you asked us to do a job and we did it as volunteers that love this community. And so give us the chance just to present that to you. And then you, the City Council, need to decide what parts of it can be done, how it gets done, how it's funded, those kind of things. So we just wanted to come tonight and ask you to consider letting us, even though we are kind of pausing and slowing some of that down, we are so close to being able to give you what you asked for. And then we know as elected officials, you get the right to choose how to move forward with that. So let us do our job so that we can empower you to do your job. And so we just wanted that chance and appreciate you for letting us come here. And once again, I want to say I'm real proud of the committee members that absolutely put their head down and worked hard at it. And I'll be honest, the staff that was assigned to us were super supportive and had everything when we needed it and when we needed it. And I just wanted to make a public acknowledgement of what a good job all of them did. So thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Miles. Okay, any public input? If you'd like to come forward, please, state your name.
Hi, I'm Brandy Cartwright. I was on the Downtown Committee and I just wanted to put my, my voice in as well. I wanted to remind you about all of the people who participated with us. We had 16 different focus groups, we had 300-plus participants in those. We had 120 interviews, not that we did personally, but that the, the committee and the staff and the DTJ all together. We had four different surveys in English and Spanish with 1,800-plus responses. And the demographics of those surveys were in line with the demographics of our, of our community. When we didn't have a lot of student input because they're a large part, we, we went back and said, we have to get more students and we have to get more, you know, of this group or that group. And we did that and we ended up getting even more people to participate. We had nine different outreach events, 700-plus attendees, 15 newsletters, 430 social media interactions. And the Downtown Committee went through four different drafts with 500-plus edits, which is a lot. It's a 180-page document that we read four times. So I just wanted to remind you about the, the many people that added to this plan, that put their ideas in, it was really great. We got community members who came to several of the downtown charrettes and public meetings who were like, this is the first hands I've ever had to be part of something that the city is doing. And they became more involved in the community. And so that is what I've got to say, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Good afternoon, I'm Shay Runnels. I was the CBB Representative for the Downtown Planning Committee. And I just wanted to affirm what Miles and Brandy said, we worked really hard on this plan. And I also teach at the university and I have been on many contentious committees, many thesis committees that were contentious, this was not one of those type of committees. We really truly had consensus building and I think a lot of that was through the leadership of the city staff, they were wonderful, and of Miles, he just really guided us through. But I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I think that this is definitely not a finished product, but we really are hungry for that public input. So I'm just imploring you to let us get to that point because as a person who also has a family business downtown, I think business owners are really eager to see where we stand on that. So that's just, that's just my thoughts on that, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Keith, I'm gonna ask you, just, are we gonna go to the comprehensive plan next? Or is this the comprehensive plan for downtown?
So, so this is, this was the discussion, they were both kind of rolled in together.
Okay. All right, okay, all right, okay. I got you, okay. All right, no other questions from the audience, we'll go to discussion amongst the council.
I'd like to hear what Keith, you looked like you were ready to speak, so.
I never turn down a chance to stand at a microphone in a sport coat. So as you can tell by the person sitting in the City Manager Chair, we've had some, some staff changes in the last little bit. When I came into this interim role in February, I heard a lot of comments from the public and concerned citizens about the planning process and about where the plans were. Because I wasn't involved in the planning process in my previous job with regard to any of these three plans, the Comp Plan, the I-69 Plan and the Downtown Plan, it took me a little bit to wrap my hands around it. When I looked at the, at the meat on the bone in the comprehensive plan, I was very concerned. That was my first choice. When I looked at the meat on the bone in the I-69 Plan, I was concerned, that there just wasn't enough there. At some point, you're gonna tell staff, we want a report card of how you did, where are we at? And I, I didn't see the deliverables listed in a manner that we could get anything but a D or an F, because we weren't gonna be able to achieve some of those goals. So I got a group of staff together to have some conversations about where are we with these plans and where do we need to be. One of our big concerns is that DTJ, our primary contractor, had literally a dozen subcontractors that were out there doing deliverables, engineers, architects, designers, that were doing pieces. And so I asked them to, to hit pause, let's hit pause for a minute so that we can take stock of where we are, take a look at the plans and quit spending money with DTJ when we don't really have a good idea of, of what deliverables they have given us and what deliverables have not been delivered. And so I asked the consultant to just hit pause so that we had an opportunity to have some conversations with the chairs of the committees, conversations with, have a conversation with council to try to get our, our direction. Obviously, the initial timelines, we weren't gonna make, we're not gonna meet. I think that all three of these plans have a good basis. I think the Downtown Plan is about seven miles ahead of the other two. And that's, that's a testament to the Downtown Committee people and that's not a slight to anybody that's served on the Comprehensive Plan or the I-69 Plan Committee, because I think they are making progress. I know that we can get all three of these plans across the finish line. I tell people often that we've got a lot of planes in the air right now, with the Capital Needs Advisory Committee, the Downtown Plan, the I-69 Plan, the Comp Plan, we're in the throes of working on the city budget. Our city planner has resigned and so she's not here to shepherd the Comp Plan part. So we've got a lot of planes in the air and I want to make sure that we get all the planes on the runway safely with five votes from City Council and, and plans that you can enthusiastically support. And so your guidance on, on what direction to go will help us do that.
Perfect, okay, thank you. All right, any input on the comprehensive plan from the audience? Okay, there being none, we can open it up for discussion amongst the council, please.
So I, I know I'm, I'm just gonna jump out there and start talking, if that's okay with everyone else.
You go ahead.
When I got here, this plan, planning process had already started. I jumped into the Comprehensive Plan Committee in late May of last year and have attended a number of those meetings. My position has not changed and I make this clear for the council and the, those watching at home and those in the audience, we are going to deliver a new comprehensive plan. I'm committed to doing that, a new Downtown Plan and the I-69 Plan. I, I can't speak for the rest of you, but we, not just because we spent a ton of money, but because of the investment that so many of our citizens have made on this and the investments that we've made. I think the interim City Manager has made a wise decision in not, we're not hitting a stop button, we're hitting a pause button, we're slowing down to make sure that we get this to fruition and get it completed. I want everyone to know that I'm committed to that and I want to work through the details of what the best practice is for us and I, I think our staff and council together, along with the, the chairs of the committees and the members of the committees can get it done.
I'm a little concerned that, like it was posted at the Blueberry Festival, so it's like it was being sold to the public without, it wasn't being sold as a draft, it was being sold as, this is what we plan to do. And I sort of understand that, but I, I think it was a little bit of imbalance because it's not the final draft, it's not what we voted on. In fact, we haven't voted. So I just think we need to be a little cautious. If you, the City Manager puts the brakes on it, but you haven't put the brakes on it, then I don't, I don't understand that.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I was, I did receive a call or two about the pause, which I really don't have a problem with. Now, as far as the Downtown Plan, it's imperative that we include all of Nacogdoches in the Downtown Plan, even if they don't live downtown. Just to be a part of Nacogdoches as a whole, you have to be involved as a whole, Downtown Conference Planning, et cetera. We need to find initiative to establish minority business downtown. We're gonna have to do that because right now, we're not part of downtown. Whether you agree with me or not, we are not part of downtown, but we need to be part of downtown. So that's just my statement.
Go ahead, Ms. Sal.
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to address Mr. Mall's concern about the Blueberry Festival display. That's something that the Downtown Steering Committee had requested in April or May. Don't check, I'll have to check my dates. We had talked about once the plan was endorsed, which was endorsed May 10th, that we were gonna have a display at Blueberry Festival and do some of these things and had advertised that with the Chamber of Commerce early on. So the idea was to show this endorsed draft plan that the DTAC had voted on already and we decided to move forward with that rather than canceling an element that was already advertised for the Blueberry Festival and something that was gonna be a draw inside the Visitors Bureau. So it wasn't trying to slide it under there or present it in any other way, it was just trying us not to cancel something we had promised was gonna be done. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I was just curious.
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, are you selling it or showing it, you know?
Yes, absolutely, and we were showing some of the key highlights because we know most people are not going to read, or some people are not going to read a whole 180-page document. So we were trying to show off some of the highlights from that plan to hopefully get people interested so they would read the entire thing. So not so much selling it, but showing what our committee had done thus far. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
So you'd made that decision prior to Brad becoming on the council then, right?
So that was decided on May 10th, when our committee endorsed the plan. We had talked about the endorsement and then kind of our public outreach plan. So that's something our committee had talked about and had talked to the chamber about as well.
Okay.
So, sorry, Jessica. City Manager, when, I know that you sent an email to all of us that we were slowing the process down so we can get the, the details lined up. Can you remind me when that was?
No, sir, no, sir, I can't.
But I, I feel like it was, it was in that, that window. Does anyone else remember the specific date? I can, I can look it up. Go ahead, I, I know you have something to.
Oh, no, no, I, I don't, it doesn't make any difference when we did it, I think we, we need to, I mean, to me, I think we need to think about, you know, what we do next. I mean, because there's so many people involved, so where do we go? And I do have some thoughts, by the way, I know that surprises no one.
It, it's absolutely essential, I think, to all of us that the, the time and energy spent by the people on these committees is respected and appreciated and that we get across the finish line with products that we can all rally behind. And, and that doesn't mean we can rally behind every single proposal, but we can rally behind the concept. And I think that's really important and I, I do appreciate the fact that the Downtown Plan Committee really wants to start getting that public input on their, on their draft document so that they can come up with a final draft. Now, it's up to council what that timeline looks like and when you'd like to see some deliverables.
So I'll give some of my thoughts and questions. And first of all, I am totally committed to having all three plans. I have from day one been committed and, but to making sure, you can stand if you want or you can, I mean. And that's part of the reason that I had questions on how we went about this process is so that we could do it right with everybody's input. We have one city, we're all involved in it, all of us. And so we do have to get it right. I think Keith Kiplinger, when he, he and I spoke about it individually and he said they are important and we have to take the time to get them right. Otherwise, we'll have something that we all won't be able to vote on or agree to approve and you all won't have what you want after having invested all this time. So my first comment is, wow, I really want to acknowledge and thank every single person who's worked so far, not, I mean, just so far, on the Downtown Plan and the leadership to get it to this point. The, the, the problem is, once you get something that is ready for feedback and criticism and critique, then you get criticism and critique. And the problem I have with doing that right now is that we have a bond to pass. And we want as much positivity right now as possible to get that bond across the finish line. We have a City Manager search underway and we want positivity to attract a new City Manager, to encourage, we want a good, solid process for that City Manager search. We have a budget and we are behind in that budget, as we all, you know, may know, but it's tricky, we have so many expenses and so much to do in that budget. That is happening right now. I particularly think it would be a disadvantage to the Downtown group to immediately go into this feedback mode when you know it will get, you will, you will be getting, you know, questions and thoughts and, you know, some of the ones I've got is, why isn't this addressed, why is this addressed, why do we have this in here, where did it come from? Is this really downtown's purview? It does not mean it's not a good draft or anything like that, but the process will encourage some kind of critique at this point. And I would like to see it positive. And I think if we, I, I, we talked about this and I, I, I agree that just to, over the summer, and how many people are here over the summer, just pause it over the summer so we can catch our breath with the budget, with the, with the bond. I, I think that would be wise, I think you might want to do that also if you do understand that this is not a, by any means saying, nobody wants this or whatever, this is just a slight summer pause, I mean, that's what I would like to see. But in addition. But in addition, I would like to see if maybe there are some things in the plan that are positive, low-hanging fruit, that we could implement right away. Maybe anything we could do that's positive, that we could implement. If you all could get together and think, there's unanimity on this particular thing. Some, a, a couple of people from the downtown group suggested code enforcement. They suggested looking at the parking situation, that there was unanimity surrounding that. Whatever there's unanimity and there's not too much expense and that we could get accomplished right now, that goes a long way to showing the work you've done, but it keeps it on a positive note. I don't know if that's, I don't know what you all think of, 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 you know, but I've spent a lot of time thinking about it and reading it, and, and anyway, if we could keep things positive over the summer and, and maybe get some low-hanging fruit. We also have staff transitions, and I, I really appreciate your analogy of all these planes up in the air, and we just want to land a couple safely right now. I took that to heart.
Mr. Bell? You have any?
No, I'm good. So, I'll echo Councilmember Bellinger's commentary. I think we have been perhaps overtaxing our staff and ourselves that we only have a limited amount of bandwidth, and we have asked staff to do a lot over the last year. With, certainly the bond, you know, I say it everywhere I go, that's my number one priority, is getting the capital needs to the finish line in November. Not to say that this isn't equally important, but we, we're on the precipice of historic improvements to our infrastructure. And I don't want us to get distracted from that. We need to be singularly focused on that, and we can't, I'm gonna use Mr. Bartlett as an example. He's got a lot of hats to wear, but you got back over here, what, 5:25 before a council meeting? He was in the capital needs advisory committee all afternoon today. And so, as that process is wrapping up on July 11th, then we're going to have more time for him to do other things. And so, as, and that's true of our other staff, too. I think Councilmember Bellinger's points are well-made, that we, we're not stopping. We're just pausing for the summer while, while we all take care of things that come with a calendar schedule. This is not something that has a set-in-stone calendar, and we can, we can get to the end on it.
I think your bond issue is gonna be up in November. So, I mean, that's to me where the capital needs, where we need to be focused. So, I'm not sure September's the right answer. I mean, nobody's criticizing you. I mean, it's, it's, everybody wants the right thing for Nakadoches. But, you know, if, if they start giving final edits and criticism on your downtown plan, which people will, then all of a sudden, we're a city divided again. And when a city's divided, you don't pass bond issues. And maybe you don't want to. But that's gonna be the first step in financing the problems we face right now. And if we're not all together on this, if we're fighting over plans that truly don't have deliverables, I'd, I have no idea how much this is gonna cost. I was trying to go through it today, and I was just like overwhelmed. Not that it's anyone's fault, it's just like Miles said, he wants to go ahead and plan a vision, which you did. The, the underneath part of that is our ability to afford any of it, you know? And if we start getting divided again, it's probably gonna defeat both purposes, which we don't want.
Miles, let me ask you something. When, do you think that's fair to put this on pause for a couple of months?
Well, sure it's.
Come on, you can come up here.
Sure, it's fair. When we were asked to do this, though, the, the approach was, we would go through this. We would go through the processes, we would trust the process, we would create a plan. We would give it to the city council, and that's it. We, we were not guaranteed that any of it or all of it would be implemented. It was designed to create a tool to give to the city council, which has the authorities to make a decision, which of these are fundable, when they're fundable, how do these plans come together? We don't, we don't see the comprehensive plan, we don't see the I-69 plan. You, it's, this is like playing, what do you call that game when it's multiple level checkers? You, you got to decide which pieces get to go first. And so, my preference is let us get our piece finished. You're not gonna take any action on it, and to be honest, there'll be pieces of it that you never take action on. We could have five different city councils over the next 10 years, and some of those pieces aren't gonna be picked up. You can see that by looking at that 73 plan. So, you know, we're game, we want what's best for the city. I, I will tell you, folks are tired, Randy.
I know.
And, and we, we, this was supposed to be a one-year deal, and it was a two-year deal. You know, it's recorded, so I won't say what I was gonna say, but with a little, yeah, a little pissing match along the way, you know? We don't care, we just want what's best for Nakadoches. We gave it our all, we stayed on task, we just want to finish our job. And to be honest, I watched the committee over time do this, and, and I don't really want to be sitting in the booth by myself at the end. And so, our committee just wants to be able to finish what we've got, and we're, we're probably the closest to being able to do that. And I'll tell you why. When, when, city manager, boy, that was new for me to say, do you? Ours was easier. I mean, I mean, to be honest, the, there's a reason they call it the comprehensive plan, you know? Ours is a downtown-focused area. That's why we were able to get ahead, and we had a great committee and we worked real hard, but we had a more defined, small part. And that's why we were successful in kind of keeping up with that timeline. It was just a challenging and daunting, but compared to some of the other tasks, just much more laser-focused. And so, so the committee doesn't wear out. I'd love the chance just to at least get the document to you, put it in your hand, and then as you build those other plans, you can see which pieces really go together. We all know at the end, nobody's gonna pick one of these up and implement it just like it's presented. Not gonna happen. Funding issues, things that change, society that changes, but we'd like the chance to do that.
Okay, let me ask you, how long a process do you think that would take? A couple of months?
I think so, I think by the end of the summer, probably. It'd probably take us another two months at least.
Is that the final edits that you're talking about?
I, I think that, is that rushing it? I, we don't have editors now, so this is the editor.
You overestimate my skills.
See, we don't have a lot of, of stuff, because, I mean, we're, we're in the middle of hiring a new city manager. We had a temporary city planner, and he decided to leave. So, there, there's lots of things that have happened. Even, there's a whole new staff when this whole thing started, not only inside city hall, but, but in this council, you know? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, just to answer your question, the original timeline that the DTAC had looked at in May was to do the public outreach during May, June, July, August, give all of the edits back to DTJ to incorporate all of the edits as needed, and then present it to city council towards the end of August or early September, depending on the amount of edits. So, that was the original timeline we had looked at back in May.
Okay, what if there's no DTJ?
That does create an issue as far as my skills in in-design doing the edits. So, that would be us doing the public outreach, getting all of the feedback on the city, and then doing the edits from there. I don't know exactly how that gets done on the staff end, but that would be the process then. We would still get all of the public input, get the edits, and then from there, make the edits to the final draft.
So, I have some questions for Miles.
I love it when you sit down and you look up and Kathleen's gone.
So, you and I have been through a lot of planning processes, either on one end or the other at the university. And the first drafts, what happens in the first draft? When this came out, I had 15 phone calls within three days. And people said, why is this? What's happening here? Why is this? What's happening there? And, and to do it right, your committee is going to want to really think through some of these critical questions that were not necess, some from your own committee members, by the way. You're saying, I, I didn't agree with this, or I didn't agree with that, or whatever. And you're gonna want to do it right, 'cause you're gonna want to listen to everybody. And my concern is that that critical part that is critical, as in criticism, as in negative and questioning, and ah, is happening right when we're trying to do a bond. That's, that is my, my biggest concern, 'cause you've got to do it. It's not, if it were something that had already been out in the, and, and I appreciate all the surveys and all that, but that's not the same as having a draft and having suggestions about, you know, infill with high-density housing, you know? What is it? Somebody counted it 47 times, or, you know? Anyway, some of those are real concerns for a lot of people. Can we pick that up not while we're trying to do a bond and a budget? That's really my gravest concern.
First time, my last time I checked, y'all can do whatever you want, you're the elected officials. And when we started, we didn't have that issue. That's an issue that came up, and next week, there'll be another issue, and next year, there'll be another issue. And at the end, the plan's not gonna satisfy everybody. Our, our job was to do the very best we could to get as much input as we could. In fact, you know, Roy was talking about an underserved population, that we actually went back to DT and said, we gotta go look at that Shawnee area, we gotta connect that into downtown for those reasons. You know, we'll, we'll do whatever you want. It's just that, what my fear is, and I hope it stays unified and there, it's not a divided one. I don't know that that's gonna happen, you don't know that's gonna happen. There may be a bond problem and a blow-up again, and then the next thing you know is, well, can we wait another six months? And then, and then you need to start a new committee because everybody's worn out and tired, and, and they're not even gonna want to be able to come back and do that. And that's, and we're always gonna be juggling that. It's something to consider. Good news is, there are five votes there and none out here, except for once every, what, how many years? So, do the best you can.
So, my second question is the one I, my proposal. Can your committee come up with a few things right now that, that, that you think there's solid agreement on, that we could implement some low-hanging fruit to keep the momentum without having the, the, the critique part? And that's really what I'd like to see, and that's, and that's in good faith with us, too. We want to do things, we want to accomplish things, we want to do them positively right now. And if you all think you can come up with a few really good things that, that, you know, including some of the code enforcement things you, you, you mentioned, and I, we, I would love to see that. That would be, I'd like to see the energy right now.
We should really take a shot at that. Here's one thing I will tell you, though, that you're right, on the, even on the committee, you cannot get everybody satisfied. That was, there was a whole lot of give and take and compromises on what went in, what didn't go in, language used, language not used, those kind of things. We really kind of tried to back up and say, okay, let's, let's talk about the concept, okay? Let's, let's look at that whole concept. And we did the best we can, and yet, you're telling me there are people that have read the draft and don't like what we've done, and I agree. We go back and pick three or four low-hanging fruits, there are gonna be people that don't like the low-hanging fruit. And, and so, if we're gonna use that process to slow down and make sure we have the input, I would say, okay, then let's slow down and make sure we have the input on everything, because I would be worried, you know? Watch this. So, if we pick the low-hanging fruit, well, it's one of the first things we're gonna do at each entry into Nakadoches. Gateways, you know, 'cause I was big on gateways, and so, it's a big joke, 'cause they say, you know, they're gonna laugh, there'd be Coke Day and gateways at the bottom, you know? I don't know that that's best. I mean, I think it is, but I think there are a lot of other people that need input in what those look like. You know, my view of a gateway, I guarantee you, is different than a view of other people's gateway. I mean, it'd be like Las Vegas coming into town or something, you know? But I.
Maybe nothing.
But I would, I, I would just say, if we're gonna pause, you know, just to make sure we don't screw up, pick the wrong things, just pause. But what I'd rather do is, we get an automatic pause. And that is, when you get these plans, there, that doesn't mean, doesn't mean y'all are gonna do it all. It means that you've got your plans to work from. And the city council is gonna have to, for years, to be honest, be picking and choosing from those plans of which move is next in order to be able to fund some things down the road. Do we need city sewer? Do we need gateways? I want a gateway, but I kind of like flushing to come out, you know? So, there's gonna be that kind of coming back and forth and juggling on all of that. So, you kind of natural pause built in there, get the plans on your table, and, and, and get them committee input. And then you ultimately control the pace and the order and the progress of how those are implemented. But that would just be my thought. I already got called back up here at once, so can I go?
Thank you very much. And thank you for your leadership.
So, hearing this discussion, we, we have these three big plans that we're trying to get to completion at a date that is uncertain to us today. The downtown plan is more complete than any of the others. I think we're all in agreement with that. So, if we're hitting pause, we, we can hit pause altogether, but maybe the downtown committee could move forward while the others are paused, and then when we get to get that one brought to us in final form, and this is just an idea, then we start working through the others to defend, bring them to completion. I know that we're, I, I share your concern about trying to have things be as positive as possible. But I kind of agree with, with Miles that having, they feel like they're close. Bring it to us, and then we can hash out the details to completion at the end, because that's ultimately what will happen anyway. We will debate the, the individual facets.
Miles, let me ask you this. Do you think that you, you could start the process back up and commit to us a final plan the middle of November?
You would just take a chair?
Take a chair.
There's a chair here.
Okay, I'll give you two and cover you. No, I just, I, I think November seems reasonable. And, you know, now, the original plan said we'd already be done, and we all know stuff happens. And so, it, it, it might be September and it might be December, but I think November's a fair target for us just to finish ours. And one more point about the staff, clearly, we're understaffed right now at the city. We're going through some stuff like that. The sooner we can get them done with ours, they can fall off on other projects to help, you know, kind of usher them. I know, I know our staff won't like that, but the reality of it is, we'll give up our time that way the sooner we get done, and they can focus on some of those other committees to maybe help carry them along, too. So, I think November is fair.
I, I, I could go along with, with the downtown thing, if we could get something in November. I, 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 I think that would be fair.
Where, where do we feel from a staff perspective?
I think November is fine, 'cause that allows us to still do some outreach, spread it out a little bit more so we don't take, you know, too much emphasis off the comp, or the CNAC committee and bonds, and then present it to y'all in November as a final draft, and gives us a chance to then make those edits a little bit more slowly if we do not have a consultant on board. So, staff can, can do that.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And, and that's starting now?
If council directs, yes. We have a few things planned to present to several of our boards. We'd already had scheduled, but it paused it until we talked to council tonight to present to several of the city-appointed boards in July and August, and then we can spread that out a little more and maybe do some of our bigger things a little bit later, so we don't miss people during the summer. But yes, we could keep moving now if council approves.
And that's public input with the final draft in middle of November, I think you said?
Yes, sir.
You know, the, the bond, that's not a guarantee is gonna be in the ballot on November.
Better be.
As far as I'm concerned, it is.
Not a sure thing, it's not guaranteed.
Well, what's your favor, everybody?
I'm favoring continuing on with downtown.
So, my suggestion then is that all of the feedback that you get from each of the committees, that you save all of it so that we can see it. So, and, and not just the committees, but provide an opportunity for public input, for people who, you know, may want to give it, and also written input.
Absolutely, yes.
It worries me, but. It worries me, but I'll do what everybody else thinks. It worries me greatly. I just think, uh, uh, some people are confused about that and the bond also, about which issues are, wait a minute, we're gonna do this? And how, how are we gonna do this? I mean, even if we're not paying for it, why are we putting this? And are we paying for that in the bond? And how, how are they two, the separate? I, I still think it's a mistake, but I'm happy to do whatever everybody wants.
So if the comprehensive plan people come and the I sixty-nine people come, can they meet until November too? I mean, it's like, once you start, where do we start? Did we pause or not?
From what I understand, they're so much further ahead of the other two. Now, Keith would have to give direction on that. I mean, because.
And for clarification, is the I sixty-nine plan part of the comprehensive planning committee?
Same committee. So my recommendation would be that the comprehensive plan and the I sixty-nine plan remain paused. We're in the process of looking, trying to determine what of those deliverables from the consultant have been delivered? What deliverables have not been delivered? And what we're still owed at this point? What things have we already paid for that need to be delivered? And, and doing an analysis of where we are so that we can come back to council with a recommendation about how to move forward with regard to DTJ and, and the various consultants. So that analysis is gonna take us a bit of time. And so I would expect probably the first meeting in July to have an agenda item for you to have some conversations with you about where we are with that contract. But I'm not gonna promise you the first meeting in July because I frankly don't know. It's taking a lot of, a lot of work for staff to put that together because it's a very big contract. There are a lot of deliverables and a lot of things that, that it's hard to tell exactly what's been done. And so we're trying to wrap our hands all the way around that.
Thank you so much for doing that. That's a huge job. Thank you.
Okay, what direction do we want to go?
Go ahead, but I'll, that's, I, I think that's the consensus. But I would caution you to be both thorough and to try to be positive and to try to be very clear which is which and to not present it by selling it. But this is the time we want input from you. Where did we, where do we have holes? Where do we have problems? And so I, I would encourage you to, to, but that's-
I, I'll agree with that. And if you can just, if you, if you can just spread this out, bring this back to us in middle of November, I'm good with it. Brad?
You know, I just know that, that you're, a lot of this that I've read, I've made notes on, and you really get into the weeds on some stuff that is like your things you talked about are very aspirational. But then you get into point and click zoning changes and parking. And that's gonna be a very sore point in people that I'm not sure this downtown committee really talked about, that you want to eliminate some zoning here in town and eliminate parking restrictions and stuff like that. And, I mean, you, you can bring back a plan, but man, oh, man, or is that gonna be troublesome for us to get into? And I'm not sure it was aspirational. We wish zoning wasn't here. We wish you didn't have to go to city council to get an approval on a zone plan. I mean, that's in here. Projects and developers may start online and may never make a personal contact with city staff. That's an edit for you, as far as I'm concerned. And I'd love for you to finish the plan. But you need to take a very hard, serious look at aspirational as opposed to institutional change.
And I would add the whole thing on Washington Square. Boy, I had so many calls about that and I had tons of questions myself about what you're putting right next to the school, what, what you're putting by the old university, what, that's a, that's a huge issue. So you're opening a can. Okay, you done?
Chad? Move forward. Okay, alright, okay. Do you have your direction, Miles? Thank you very much, sir, for your time and service. Okay, we'll go to item B. Hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding possible wellness exam and tobacco use surcharges. Ms. Hall?
Mayor, council. We're seeking ways to better educate employees about their health. Where, what we're hoping is to launch a program that will incentivize employees to get their free annual wellness exams and to, and to curb or cease the use of tobacco products by a monetary enhancement. We're hoping that this will guide employees towards being more proactive about their health and, and to help ensure a overall healthier workforce. Also during open enrollment, we're hoping to, uh, we're gonna require that employees provide documentation for any dependents that they have on the plan. And this is just to ensure that the plan includes valid dependents as opposed to folks who are not eligible to be on the plan. And Jeff Summers and I are available for question. We just wanted to make sure that you guys understood. I've given you some handouts with regard to CDC with regard to smoking secession as well as information with regard to Catapult and Lavango, which are the companies that will be helping us with, Catapult will be helping us with the onsite wellness exams and Lavango. They provide assistance to those folks who are, who have designated conditions like high blood pressure or diabetes. And the incentive is, we're trying to incentivize employees carrot stick. You can call it whatever you'd like. We want the employees to have their free annual physical examination. And if they choose to have it, it's all well and good. It's great. If they choose not to have it, they will, it will cost them, we're looking at fifty dollars per month. And the same with smoking secession. And I think this is something that's pretty much done industry wide. And I think Jeff can speak to that better than I can. But I know the tobacco secession programs have been in place with employers for a lot of years. And we're just trying to catch up. And I'm available for questions as, as well as Jeff.
All right, any public comment on this item? If not, we'll have discussion amongst the council.
I think it's great. I, I appreciate all the work you've, you've done to put together this package. I think it'll help our employees. It'll help our city. It'll help our, our healthcare package. And I just appreciate it.
I feel the same way.
Well, one of the things, you mentioned compensation. Was that monetary compensation?
Incentive.
Incentive.
So if they have the, if, for example, the employee only portion of the medical is free. And we're asking that in order to, for it to remain free for employees, that they have this physical and then they either go through the secession program or, or complete an affidavit saying that they do not use tobacco products. If they choose not to do that, they're choosing to incur a monetary cost that they will pay every month towards their healthcare.
So this is not to curb smoking employee wise, but family as a whole?
And, uh, adult dependence. Isn't that right, Jeff? It includes adult, uh, employees and then their adult dependence.
Okay. I, I just know the private industry when they went to no smoking in companies' facilities, even if it was a work site away from there. That was the only thing that really cut out smoking. Because I knew there was a lot of coworkers that had been smoking thirty, forty years. When they could no longer smoke on work sites or company facilities, they stopped.
Now, we already, there's an ordinance that's in place prohibiting smoking on city facilities, city vehicles and things like that.
And work sites, yeah.
That, that already exists. But we still have a, quite a bit of usage of tobacco.
I, I see the stick. Where's the carrot?
Continued free employee for the, uh, free, uh, healthcare for the employee. And we have not had, my experience in other places, I've not ever had a wellness exam where something wasn't caught. Where someone who didn't realize they didn't, didn't realize they had high blood pressure or borderline diabetic. And our goal is to get them care. And if we need, does that mean they go to the doctor a little more upfront? That's fine because we're trying to be a little proactive about this so that when the heart attack, we're, we're preventing the heart attack. And it is a clear line of causation between smoking and a lot of those cancers. And if we can get an employee, we're not asking someone who smoked for, like he's, like Councilman Bolton said, for thirty or forty years. They may, they may not quit the first time. We're asking them to try.
But they're still gonna be charged that fifty dollars a month?
No. The way it wor-, the way the system works is if they get in a program and they fin-, finish the program, they may not quit the first time. But the effort that they're taking is sufficient. Because I've seen people, it takes three or four times before they really say, okay.
Well, that was my question. How many times do they get?
And right now, we're, we're at the point where we're just asking them to try.
Is it, does it cost more money for this?
And Jeff, I may need, I think I may need Jeff to help me with this. But they, we do have, we have a program that's part of our plan that helps prevent tobacco consumption.
Catapult, uh, which is the wellness program, does have a charge, just like, Catapult, the wellness program has a charge, just like if you went to a doctor and had your physical. They're just able to come onsite, which makes it more convenient for employees to do that. And it's run through the claim system of Blue Cross Blue Shield. So it's run like any other claim would be if you went to the doctor and had a physical. So it really gives them an opportunity to come onsite and have their physical done instead of taking off time and, and trying to sit in a doctor's waiting room and get a physical. So that's, that's really the, the only cost is the difference in what, that, what they charge versus what maybe a doctor in, in Nacogdoches would charge. Lavango, which is the disease management, it's for people that just participate. Participate in the plan, get coaching, making sure they're doing all the things they need to, whether they're a diabetic or they're, or they need other things that are chronic. And it really helps them. And that gets run through the claim system as well. So two great wellness incentives and disease management programs that will be implemented into the city come renewal time, which is just right around the corner. Like Ms. Hall said, it's, it's been something that we've talked about a long time. Most of all of my customers that we have have already implemented that. You, you ask about the smoking cessation and that and how long that lasts. When the Affordable Care Act was passed, that was part of the Affordable Care Act. So you could charge more for people that use tobacco, but you had to offer classes, smoking cessation drugs have to be covered, all those things. And it's evergreen, so it lasts forever. So it's not just on a one-year basis. If they continue to try to stop smoking with those either smoking cessation classes or drugs, they will not have to pay any additional premiums. Hope that helps.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
I, I also wanted to add, I, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but some of these costs for the prevention and checkups are so much cheaper than the costs of hospitalizations. And I am hoping, and I correct that we might anticipate a reduction in some of these other major costs to our system.
So not only do we want to make sure we catch something, more importantly, save someone's lives, obviously. And if there's a return on investment from doing that, that's even better. But like Ms. Hall said, almost every time you see this, you're gonna catch someone that has cholesterol counts that they didn't even know they had. And if that saves someone li-, someone's life, that's, that's as important as, as saving some claims dollars, for sure.
My insurance company, I'm not gonna call the name, but they do wellness visit. They come to my house, I get a fifteen dollar gift card. But yeah, they come twice a year. And I, well, it's probably a, a physical that I wouldn't go on my own to schedule. But they scheduled for me with no cost.
I think that's what we're trying to, trying to do. Besides maybe not coming to your house, but coming right here on campus.
So I, I just want to make a couple of comments about this from a personal perspective. As a, the child of two parents that have smoked most of their adult lives, if not all. My dad had a double lung transplant back in twenty twenty-one as a result of a degenerative lung disease. And anything we can do to help people not smoke, make sure that we can do the education piece, but also helping them see what the, the end game is. My dad should not be alive today. It was a miracle that the, the transplant happened. But seeing someone you love being pumped full of enough air just so they can get their next breath, you don't know what that's like until you have to live it. And so I think this is an absolutely great thing. And as someone personally who had my annual wellness visit yesterday, my finger still hurts. And my cholesterol was high. Never had an issue with cholesterol before. They couldn't even put me in the, the calculator to see what risk I was because one of the variables is age, which wasn't high enough. So I think this will be such a benefit to our employees. So absolutely, I'm in favor of it.
Do we need a motion or anything or just to, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jeff, Ms. Hall. Okay, next item on the agenda, item C. Receiver presentation, hold a discussion regarding emergency management. Mr. Self, please.
Mayor Johnson, members of council. My name is Michael Self. I currently serve as the interim fire chief, excuse me, the interim assistant fire chief and as the emergency management coordinator for the city of Nacogdoches. I would like, I'm mainly here to introduce your presenter tonight. He retired a little over a year ago from the city of Nacogdoches. He served for over twenty years as an emergency communications dispatcher. His voice is a lot more familiar to the citizens, more so than his face. But about a year ago, he went to work for the Texas Division of Emergency Management and has been assigned to our county in a new program that TDM has came up with. He has been instrumental since he came online a year ago. I visit with him, if not weekly, almost daily. He and his team have been instrumental. We learned just a little while ago, we had applied to the Small Business Administration to try to bring a lawn program to Nacogdoches. And we were approved by the SBA for that. So in the next couple of weeks, after a media push and getting that to the citizens that were affected by the flood in May, we will be doing that and Wyatt was very instrumental in that. And so I thank him for that and will be updating y'all on that as more details and dates come around. But at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Wyatt Henderson from TDM.
Thank you, Michael. Good afternoon. My name is Wyatt Henderson. I've been resident of Nacogdoches County for about twenty-five years. Like Michael said, I worked for police department for twenty years and dispatch, okay? And so I was so young, I decided I'd just start a new career last August. I did go to work for TDM, which is stands for the Texas Division of Emergency Management, okay? TDM is responsible for coordinating the state emergency management all hazards plan and has done so for sixty-seven years. We assist our local governments in responding to and recovering from emergencies and disasters. We work with our local partners to implement plans and programs to help prevent or lessen the impact of emergencies and disasters in the future, okay? We get this responsibility from chapter four eighteen of the Texas government code. It lays out an extensive set of responsibilities that are assigned to TDM. In two thousand nineteen, the Texas legislature passed legislation would transfer the Texas Division of Emergency Management from the Texas Department of Public Safety to the Texas A&amp;M University System. So we are under the A&amp;M University System at this time. TDM is organized into six regions around the state. So we do support two hundred and fifty-four counties and twelve hundred and sixteen cities. Nacogdoches is in region two. We're District fourteen. And that's made up eleven DECTC counties. So we do outline the same thing as the DECTC does, the DPs Texas Council of Governments. Prior to two thousand twenty-two, TDM had thirty-one employees in the field to support local jurisdictions and unmet needs across the state. So there were thirty-one employees around the state. In April of two thousand twenty-two, Chief Kidd announced that the development- In April of two thousand twenty-two, Chief Kidd announced that the development of the CDLO program, which stands for the County Liaison Officer. I like to compare this program like the county extension agent, okay? Everybody probably knows Ricky Thompson over at the NX, he's our county extension agent for the agriculture, alright? So every county in Texas except one has a county extension agent, and I can't remember what name of the county, but they have such a small population that there's a county extension agent that covers two counties, okay? Everybody just goes to Ricky if they need assistance, like from the schools, the 4H, FFA, or whatever, they can go to Ricky, he can assist them, you know, with any kind of planning that they need, any kind of assistance from the place, from the state. So that's kind of the way I look at my job. When the CLO program is complete, there will be one hundred CLOs strategically placed throughout Texas. This will give us a CLO or district coordinator in a hundred and thirty-one of the two hundred and fifty-four counties. So we will be covering at least half the counties in Texas when we're fully staffed. Right now, we've got sixty-something hired, we still have like forty to go. This program started, like I say, last April, I got hired like in September, and I was one of the first ones. So Nacogdoches was one of the first counties. They did like twenty at a time, and so we're progressively getting to the rest of them. In the DECTCAG region, there will be a CLO stationed in seven of the eleven counties, plus my district coordinator, John Klingerman, he's in Angelina County. So we'll have eight people in our DECTCAG region. So the counties that are covered will be Angelina, Nacogdoches, Shelby County, Houston County, Newton County, Polk County, San Jacinto, and Sabine, okay? This gives us a greater footprint to be able to assist our local jurisdictions when the need arises. As a CLO for Nacogdoches County, I work hand in hand with Michael and also with Tara, she's the Nacogdoches County Emergency Management. When a disaster arises, we work to collaborate and communicate through unmet needs and determine what resources may be needed. After the flooding event, like Michael talked about, that was in May, TDM was able to assist the city of Nacogdoches through the process of assisting with damage assessments. Region two team brought ten members in, and we went door to door to make our local citizens were able to get their damages reported to the state. We also contacted businesses and churches that were affected. Last Thursday, we were able to meet with the Small Business Administration to determine if we did meet the threshold for SBA. Like Michael said, we did meet that threshold, and they did notify us today, so I'll be working with Michael, and we're in the process of getting that set up. Because Texas does have a such diverse geography and economy, we see all types of disasters. This includes everything from hurricanes, flooding, wildfires, chemical hazards, tornadoes, and even the pandemic that came, okay? With so many potential threats, Texas, we need to prepare, we need to respond to, we need to recover, and we need to mitigate against any disasters. Texas leads the nation in natural disasters, and we have had over three hundred and fifty-five major events since nineteen fifty-three. So we are number one in the United States as far as disasters. To best, to best serve the state of Texas, TDM is made up of four mission areas. We work with preparedness, we also do response. The main, our main goal is recovery, like we've been helping Michael with, and then also mitigation. With these four areas, TDM helps our communities before, during, and after a disaster. With TDM being a member of the Texas A&amp;M family, we have seven other agencies on board with us that all have a role during a state disaster, and those agencies are the Texas AgriLife Research Center, Texas Engineering Experiment Station, Texas Forest Service, Texas AgriLife, Texas Engineering, Texas Veterinary, and also the Texas Transportation Institute. These are just some of the partners that TDM can bring to the table in a time of need, and TDM is here to assist our local partners in building a better Texas. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, sir. Any comments from the audience? Council have a discussion or comment?
Thank you.
I, I just have one thing, I know that collecting all the names and going out and looking at the destruction that happened with, over the last flooding and was a lot of work. And I appreciate all the work that all of you did, including our police department, but particularly you, in identifying all those people so that there could be some relief in small business loans. That's, it can be sometimes a little under our, our visibility, but we all, I know, appreciate that work for the people who lost so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And the speed with which it happened.
And the speed, right, thank you very much. And anything we can do in the future to help you? Maybe each of us in our wards can help send out the word so that we can collect the names and addresses of people who've been impacted to help you out, I think we might be able to do that.
Yes, empower us to, to serve, for sure.
Nagus.
Okay, we'll move along to item six point D. That's mine, it's consider appointment of a mayor pro tem and vice mayor pro tem. The city of Nacogdoches Charter states on an annual basis, the city council shall choose a chairman pro tem and a vice chairman pro tem to serve in the absence of the chairman. Currently, the mayor pro tem is council member Roy Bolden, and we do not have a vice mayor pro tem. So. I'll open it up for discussion, or is it me?
Mayor, I'd be glad to offer a motion to nominate Mr. Roy Bolden to continue as our chairman pro tem.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, now the vice mayor pro tem, we do not have one right now. Chad, do you wanna be it?
I'll serve it, if that's the will of the council.
You're the senior member of the council, you and Kathleen, so.
I'll be glad to do it.
Do you wanna be it, Kathleen?
Makes no difference to me.
Alright, okay. I think Chad had a little interest in it.
I'll do it.
Okay, alright, okay. Yeah, and somebody, you wanna make your motion for you?
Make the motion to make him vice mayor.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, moving right along, we'll go to item six E, which is mine. We'll consider appointing members to the DPs Texas Council of Governments Board of Directors. The DPs Texas Council of Governments, or DECTCAG, begins a new board membership on July first of two thousand twenty-three. DECTCAG bylaws state each member city with a population over ten thousand and up is eligible to select four members to serve on the board, who shall be the mayor or city council members. Current DECTCAG board members are Roy Bolden, Kathleen Ballinger, and Chad Hucklebee. I would like to, and those were the members, I'd like to nominate Brad Mall to be on that board.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Do you wanna second?
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Do we need action to reappoint the remaining?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Well, I just thought that was part of it. Okay, so just make a motion of everybody that's on there, and then, and then, and then we're adding Brad.
I'll second that.
Okay, did I make, did I make the motion?
You just did.
Okay, good, was it a good one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, okay, good, okay. Alright, moving right along. Item six F, consider appointing a representative to the DPs Texas Rural Transportation Planning Organization of the Dps Texas Council of Governments, city manager.
Mayor, council, it's, Mayor, council, it's, it's time once again to appoint somebody to the Dps Texas Rural Transportation Planning Organization, which is quite easy to say. In the past, I believe that the city manager served on that board, and so I would suggest that either a member of council, or if no member of council would like to serve on that organization, then I would recommend Case Opperman from our engineering department who actually understands transportation, so.
So my only question on that is, Mr. Bolden, I know you're on the Brazos Transit District Board, do you have any interest in?
I, I don't mind sharing, someone else.
Then I guess my other question is, Case, do you want to do this?
I'm happy to serve if that's the will of the council.
Okay. Councilmember Ballinger, you look like you were ready to make a motion.
I'm not sure, I'll let you make the motion, cause I'm not sure what you're.
I make a motion that we appoint Case Opperman as our representative to the Dps Texas Rural Transportation Planning Organization of the Dps Texas Council of Governments.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
That's a lot of words, that's a lot of words.
Okay. Next item is six G, receive a report and give staff direction regarding the city manager search. Ms. Hall.
Miss Mayor. I have before you, and I believe you have copies in front of you, a draft of the brochure that we're hoping to send out on behalf of the city for our next city manager. If you would, I don't, I'm not sure if you've had enough time to review it, but I just wanna know your thoughts with the way it looks, and particularly, when we met last, the, the council was really, they really had, you really had strong thoughts about, about the section called About the Position, as well as the section called The Ideal Candidate. And so if I may, just go through that real quick, just get your thoughts and ideas. About the position, the, the city manager provides leadership and vision to the city of Nacogdoches. The city manager requires, represents the city to other agencies, organizations, businesses, and citizens. Under the direction of the city council, the city manager serves as a chief executive officer and acts as the mayor and council's primary advisor. The city manager meets regularly with the council, executes contracts, and assists with other legally binding documents. The city manager is very familiar with the way the city, city management works and how to be successful in said environment. That's page four, sorry. Any thoughts with, are we?
I think that yes, you just put in there, it's not there, so.
Yes, 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 you're, you're correct.
Are you on four, or are you on?
It was page four.
Okay, so it's five in our, in our.
We, we, we were on four, now I'm going to five.
Okay.
And then page five, The Ideal Candidate. The city of Nacogdoches is seeking a candidate that is adaptable, positive, and who possesses a sound, moral, and ethical compass. The candidate should have a participatory and consensus, consensus building mindset, and be willing to work towards creating an environment conducive to growth and success. The candidate will be a strong communicator, both written and verbal, who values building bridges and not walls, and who listens far more than they speak. The candidate should value and respect individual differences in how we all contribute to the success and service of our citizens. The candidate should have a strong affinity for the cities, for the city's past, a healthy understanding of the city's present, and a keen eye on the city's future.
I love it, great job.
I got chills when you read that.
Just one last thing, on, on page six, the education, we, we kind of bandied around the number of years, and so I just wanted to make sure that, and, and whether or not municipal government and that type of experience was necessary. It reads, a bachelor's degree in public administration, business administration, or related field is required. A master's degree is preferred. Seven to ten years' experience successfully leading multifaceted organizations with large budgets is required. Municipal experience is highly preferred. Knowledge, understanding, and ability to apply rules, laws, regulations, and ordinances as they apply to cities, municipal finance, and employee relations is required. A combination of related education and educa, and experience that demonstrates the candidate's knowledge, skill, and ability to perform the essential functions of the position will be considered.
Seven to ten years, it seems like a slow learner.
Okay.
I would. Five to seven? No, I didn't just, you don't have to write it down, I'm just asking. Seven years seem like a long timeframe.
Well, yes, sir, it, it does, but for, in, in most, when I'm looking at classifications, and I'm looking at pay ranges, for example, they give a new, brand-new employee zero to five years. By the fifth year, ideally, they have gained all of the knowledge that they need for a particular position, and they should be at a hundred percent, ideally. In this, in this particular case, we want someone who not only understands leadership and management, but also understands budgets and understands municipal, municipal, excuse me, municipalities. So I don't think that seven years or ten years is, I mean, cause we want someone that has a solid record of growing successfully into the role. But that's just my thoughts.
Average in Texas of city managers is somewhere between four to six years in their position.
In, in their position, absolutely, but when they, when they're coming into those positions, they probably have a great deal more experience in other places.
They are, they are job jobs.
Sometimes the circumstances change. But it's the consensus of the council.
I like seven to ten years.
Any, are, any community input first, then we'll hold discussion. Okay, alright, we'll have discussion amongst the council, please, okay?
I had a couple of things from my notes. One is, I wanted to make sure that that degree, say we had a, somebody who's been a successful city manager for fifteen years, but his bachelor's degree was in French. Does that knock him out of the running, or her?
That would be the council's call.
I would think that we don't wanna have a, you know, that, you know, that wording, that if we have a really successful candidate, we talked today, I wanna make sure we get the diamond and, and don't eliminate somebody who might be really good. So I, I'm a little concerned about saying it's required.
So who is, who determines what a related field is?
Well, French is French, you know? I mean, I, I don't know what we might get, but I'm just thinking so many people get their bachelor's in something totally different than, you know? Yeah, than somebody else, you know, you know, maybe psychology's really, maybe, maybe we should, I don't know what. Or maybe we could say, you know, if there's not, I don't know what.
Just a bachelor's, are you saying not necessarily the area, but a bachelor's degree is required?
I think so, I think so, cause the bachelor's, by the time you get seven to ten years, I almost don't care what their bachelor's was in at that point.
There's where your, your, your education is, is those seven to ten years.
Right, 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 right.
It's not out of that textbook, that helps, but your, your education is those seven to ten years.
I, I think. You know, you can't, cause you're talking about kids at, at that point, you know, early on in there, they might have a degree in something else. Anyway, I'm, I'm trying to cast the wide net, so we get a good.
Understood, so am I, just give me direction, am I striking that, or?
So maybe you could say a bachelor's degree in public administration, business administration is preferred rather than required. But a bachelor's, can you word it where a bachelor's degree is required, but not specifically those fields?
I think I would just say a bachelor's degree is required, you know? I think. And, and the only other addition I had was, I, I wasn't sure if we all, this is, I'm not sold on it, but I'm thinking, we, I, I wrote down, an understanding and appreciation for small cities is, is essential. But maybe it's preferred or something, I would like them to be able to demonstrate some kind of understanding for a city ourselves.
So I want to bring that up again. Are we saying that we would not show preference to someone whose degree was in a related field to the actual job?
I, I don't think, I think by the time, you know, if they've had seven to ten years' experience in running something, I don't know that I would, I'm just think, e- even, even when, when my son was going into medical school, he had a friend whose bachelor's degree was in French, and going in, and that's why I brought French up, because he going into medical school, and they actually liked it, that he had some various, you know, he had an education outside of the small field that he was in, so, I, I, I don't know, I, I'm thinking by the time you get to, to the rest of the package, what your bachelor's is in, you know, may not be as important, I, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly someone who doesn't work in my specific field, both of my undergraduate and master's degrees are in math.
Yeah, right.
But my second major in my undergrad is political science. So, uh, thinking that you might prefer to have someone who really does have a background in public administration, might be beneficial to say you prefer that, but if you don't, you're still an eligible candidate. We're not excluding you, which is one of the reasons why we discussed last time, that we prefer having a, a master's degree, and we want uh experience successfully leading uh multifaceted, not specifically municipality, but it, we would like for you to have done that, but if you haven't, that's okay. And that's really the reason I say, if we're going to say we prefer it in the, the type of experience they have, why would we not prefer it also in the education?
I'm okay with whatever you want to do, but.
The private industry is now stating our bachelor's degree is preferred, but it doesn't eliminate you from taking this job, especially telecommunications industry.
Let's just do bachelor's degree.
Okay, so.
Let, let's just do bachelor's degree if that's all.
Bachelor's degree is required, and leave out bachelors in public administration and business administration preferred. Take that out.
I, I think so, yes. And then what did you want to add, Kathleen, on the, on the?
Maybe an understanding and appreciation for small cities is essential, or is preferred, or is something, I mean, one of, one of the things that hangs us up is transferring from a large uh metropolitan area to a smaller community, and I think it would help people to understand we care a lot about that. So, I'm just throwing in that out for.
You might could put that in About the Position, uh, Keneda.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's great, that'd be a good place to put it.
And then, uh, on opportunities and challenges, I mean, we could list, you know, we could do six pages of those. If, if you could get a picture, to put it, maybe another snapshot of, of, of Nacogdoches, the lake or something, I, I don't care what it is. The lake would be great.
There's a lot of white space there.
Right.
There's a lot of white space.
And then fill that in with, with, uh, maybe a picture of water, of, because we do have a lot of lakes here. And then, uh, now, when we get to.
Do you want something, you want a picture on page five, too, underneath there?
Yes. Maybe we could take a picture of one of our new restrooms we got. It was a quarter of a million dollar one.
Hey, I, I took a tour on Friday, and it's fantastic.
Well.
I was the first one to ask for a bathroom tour, I think.
It's expensive, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I just want to say, I think you've done an incredible job.
Absolutely.
Thanks, thank you.
Really, really nice.
Um, I've been working with Kevin, and he's done, he's, he's helping with the graphics, and he done, he's done a great job. Last thing, compensation.
But before we get to the opportunities and challenges, are you going to add to that, or is this?
I, 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 that's what I was looking for input on that. Because I didn't want to be too s- specific, because we don't want to, as you stated earlier, we don't want to be too negative about some of our challenges, but.
You don't want to run them off while they get here.
Um, but we, you know, the comprehensive plan, including but not limited bond issues and infrastructure needs, covered a good number of them.
So, I think the, the opportunity is, one of them is, we have a wonderful university that has, was founded, and you, you can look it up, but, and now we're about to be part of the University of Texas system, that's a huge opportunity. We have two beautiful creeks that we have an opportunity to.
And, and we have that listed in the Nacogdoches community. Um, at, at the bottom of page one, it talks about SFA and thirteen thousand full-time students, and it offers comprehensive education, and it's recently become a member of the University of Texas um system.
Oh, okay. So, and, and I think an opportunity is also, we might want to mention that as we, in this new um age of being able to work remotely, where people want to live, I think that's also an opportunity for, for the city, to, and for us to take advantage of, and we have multiple opportunities with tourism, and historic tourism, and also with, um, I don't know if Brian Bray's still here, but recreational tourism. So we have opportunities to grow recreational tourism and historic tourism, I think both of those.
And the challenges could be in a positive way, like expected growth, that could be a challenge.
Right, unexpected, and an opportunity.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we got to get to the, to the, to the meat, compensation and benefits.
And I just need that first blank, I can fill in the rest of those blanks, um, I just need that first blank on page six.
And, and did you say before, I'm sorry, I've forgotten about, a range is a good thing?
And we can certainly um do the range, uh, yes ma'am, and base it on, um, well, any, anything will be based on qualifications, for sure. And I had previously given council, um, what TCMA had listed as salaries for the different cities across the state, as well as a quick survey of some of the area manager survey, uh, salaries.
What was your recommendation? Sorry.
Yes. And this is, this is just based on my experience, uh, working pretty much all over the state, and um, bottom line is, you're going to get what you pay for. And I understand that we are a city um, uh, where the, and we, we included that, where our average income is, or median income is about thirty-six thousand dollars uh a year, but we need someone who's going to help move us forward, whether it's all of the projects, the multimillion-dollar projects that you were discussing with Miles and, and the committees earlier, uh, we're going to need somebody who's very savvy, and will understand how to get us where we need to be in the near future. And when I say near, in the next couple of years, as well as the next decade, and that's going to, that's not going to come cheap. And so, my recommendation would be nothing less than two hundred to start with. But.
I'm good with that, I, I, I'm, I'm good with that, and, and if we got a quality candidate, uh.
Because they are going to have their work cut out for them, with, with the projects that we have coming up.
There is no question, they are coming into a storm, and it's a good storm, but it's a bad storm.
If you would like to make it a range, we can do that, but.
Or approximately, I think if you put it at two hundred, that's a good approximate, I mean, you could get the.
And then keep the DOQ.
Yes. I think that's good.
I agree.
Yeah.
The word approximately is very good in that space.
Okay, now, Ms. Hall.
Yes, sir.
When, when could you get this out?
The next day or so. We can get it on TML, uh, TCMA, ICMA.
And, and they send their, their application to this hr@nacts.us?
Yes.
Okay, your attention, or is that, is it going to go to you?
It comes to, it comes.
Okay, and that will be uh cover letters and the resumes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, okay.
And I'm going to, uh, we did not put on their EOE, but that's going to be on there as well.
What does EOE mean?
Equal Employment.
Yeah, okay.
Equal Opportunity Employer.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Do you have what you need from us?
Yes, sir, I think so, excellent, thank you.
Thank you so much, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the uh, uh, regular session. We will now go into executive sessions, which are for city councils to receive information and deliberate on matters specified in subchapter D of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Council may reconvene an open session to vote on the matter. There are three items on executive session. A, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072, deliberations regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if deliberation in an open meeting would have, would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. The subject of this executive session item is to discuss the Central Heights Water System. Item B, personnel matters. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, deliberations regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city attorney. Item C, consultation with attorney. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code of Section 551.071, conduct a private consultation with its attorney regarding a settlement offer or matter in which the duly, the duty of the attorney of the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Okay, and it is uh seven twelve, and we will can, go to executive session. It is uh eight forty-eight, and we are back from executive session into open session. We'll start on executive session, item A, uh, which was pursuant to the Texas Code Section 551.072, deliberations regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deli- if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the government bodily, of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. The subject of this executive item is to discuss Central Heights Water System. No action was taken. Okay. Okay, next item. B, personnel matters, is Mr. Kirkland on? Okay, alright. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.074, deliberations regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, i.e. city attorney. Do we have any discussion? Do you want, anybody want to say anything? If not, I'll make a motion that uh Mr. Steve Kirkland, the city attorney of Nacogdoches, Texas, is terminated effective immediately. That's the motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Mayor.
Yeah, excuse me.
Uh, do, do we have to have public comment with there being a, a motion on an action item?
Was there a public comment at, at the beginning of the agenda for all items?
Where we're at open session, but not for the executive session.
Yep, uh, now I would recommend you can request public comments.
Okay, is there any public comment? There being none?
I do have, uh, just a short comment that I want to make. Employment matters are, are seldom simple in, in what we do in government, and this one's been really difficult for me, but as time has gone on, it's become clear to me that the majority of the council does not have a high level of confidence in the city attorney, and that has to be the single determining factor for me, and for that reason, I feel that we have no alternative but termination. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. It is. Item C, okay, I'm sorry, uh, consultant, consultation with the attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, conduct a private consultation with its attorney regarding a settlement offer or matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with Texas Government Code Chapter 551, no action. Okay, it is. Ms. Biddy's adjourned.